Evening Jane. No volume.
Here we go.
Yep, you're on tip, you're on top.
Doing my best to appease everybody. There you go. We good?
Yeah, we're good. You're the first one in.
Oh, and I was rushing to get in.
Well, you got three minutes to go.
It was nasty out there tonight.
A little fog is good for you. Pleasure mine.
Doctor to Bill today, and he's out in Aspen at the Witscall, and he said they've gotten so far, three feet of snow.
Hey, Gene.
Hey, Josh, you're just telling them about just tell them about the biggest skiing enthusiasm out there in Aspen. Lot of snow.
Yeah.
He says that the powder is up above your knees. That would be your, that would be your kind of skiing.
I'm used to ice up to the bottom of the skis.
Yeah, but I have a feeling you'd be pretty good at powder.
All right.
Just a gut feel.
I'm willing to find out.
Yeah. Because I had an article in the Globe about the lack of snow.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. It was up, we skied Sunday, and it was a lot of fun because it was fifty-six and sunny, but there's not much snow around.
No, I can imagine. It has to have a lot of bear spots.
Yeah, I mean, um, he's getting ad attached. They're pretty conservative about, you know, what they'll open up, so uh, it's all man-made snow, but um, you know, it's good cover.
Yeah, my daughter and my grandkids are all over at Wildcat for the most part.
Yeah, I mean, Wildcat, they'll open up anything. Yeah, might have to jump from patch of snow to another, but
Really?
I think maybe they're a little more conservative now that Vale owns them, but uh, yeah.
That's a tough one. I haven't skied in ten years. But when I did, I used to enjoy it, but it was a challenge.
Yeah, that's part of the fun.
Because Bill called me the other day, and he was at the, up at the top of White Heat, up at Sunday River.
Oh, wow, yeah.
That's, have you skied that?
Yeah, it's been a long time, but um, yeah, I have.
That's a challenge.
Yeah.
I wish these lakes would support it.
Yep. Just gotta get my cheat sheets open here.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Mr. Baller. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, but these lights are back in the air. I can't adjust them.
Looks, it looks, it looks rather angelic.
Yeah, right, exactly. I'm in my Boston studio, that's why.
Down, downstone.
I'm a county either in Nahat or here.
The label fits.
I'm still a county.
Your audio is a little muffled again, Mark.
Is it? Um, okay, is that better?
Yes, that's not, yes.
Yeah, I think so. A little bit better.
All right, uh, second, uh. There were public hearings tonight, right, Tony?
Yes, for National Grid, for a poll on Ward Road.
Okay, so let me open six thirty, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all members are in attendance. So open the Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, March sixth at six thirty by Zoom. All members in attendance. As we come in, annual town elections. Uh, Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. The polls open from seven AM to eight PM. Nomination papers are now available at Town Clerk's office and due back by March eighth. Um, two thousand twenty-four. For a list of open seats, visit Tom Clerk's page on the hat.org. So March eighth is this Friday. Time's running out. Um, annual town meeting, Saturday, May eighteenth at twelve thirty PM, the Hat Town Hall. Wallet with articles we posted soon. Annual dog licenses that do back to Town Clerk by April first. And twenty, all the late fee will be added for any licenses you see af- after April fifteenth. Water sewer bills and trash bills due March eleventh. Contact the legislature or clerk's office if you have any questions. Uh, Mr. Parking Ban is still in effect until March twentieth from twelve AM to six PM. No vehicles on the street. Uh, contact the half of the station if there are any issues with this. Parking stickers, um, the two thousand twenty-four parking stickers will be available for purchase at the hat.org starting May fifteenth. Uh, still, my mother will be up getting, asking me to get online to get that right away. So seat parking sticker is very important to her. So the scholarship, Charles Kelly Scholarship application is due back by April twelfth. Application for more information about the local scholarship, visit the scholarship page at the hot.org. If I leave the vacancy, an open seat on the building of the field, send letters of interest to kthaler@thehatstore.org. Is that Senator Josh or Gene in the open public?
No, I didn't want
No, I do have one question, uh, mainly for Tony, I guess. Are there any other boards that, um, have open seats, appointment boards?
I'm sure there are. I'd have to double-check my list, but the ZBA, uh, the other ones aren't, um, like, for instance, like Golf Course Committee, that one, I think, can go up to nine members. There probably is seven now, you know, so it's not as, as urgent, I would say, as, you know, the ZBA seat.
Yep. All right, thanks, just wondering. Um, no further comments?
Gene?
No, I'm good.
Okay, great. Um, that brings us to, uh, uh, public hearing on National Grid. Uh, let's take a motion to open the hearing.
Remove that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing with National Grid.
Second.
Motion's renamed and seconded. Any, um, discussions on the motions? All in favor?
Jane can't D I.
Josh can't write.
Mark can't write. Um, okay, uh, Tony, um, we have our representative from National Grid joining us tonight?
I don't think so. I don't, Dan, do you know if anyone's coming from National Grid? Yeah, I don't think anybody's coming from National Grid tonight. Essentially, this is, this is a new poll in the uh, area of the Ward Road Pump Station. And it has to do with the upgrade project that we're doing at the pump station. Um, so it's just a matter of process to go through the hearing.
Okay, uh, we're gonna put up a new poll in that area. Then you can make sure there's a reason for that poll for future reference. Well, that's routine, is that correct, Dan?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, this is a routine request from National Grid. They wanna apparently put up a new poll on Ward Road, and the reason that we have this hearing is because they need to establish a reason to place that poll. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, it's routine, like the cable contract hearing stuff. It's routine so they can report to the state that they uh, had a hearing, or at least a hearing was held in Nahat, so it's just routine. And, and just, it's our, it's at our request, uh, because it's related to the project.
Okay, sounds good. Do I hear a motion, um, uh, to approve this petition?
Um, so moved. I do have one question, or maybe I'll wait till it's seconded.
Second.
Okay. Hold on, uh, Josh, why don't we, uh, why don't we read the motion? You have a motion in front of you?
Uh, yeah. Think I do. Have a lot of things open here, unfortunately. Uh, yes, I do have the motion in front of me. Uh, shall I? Um, yeah.
I seconded.
No, no, we gotta read the motions, sir.
Yeah, I, I guess we haven't read the motion yet. Uh, remove that the remove that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the petition submitted by National Grid from the National Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, and Verizon New England, Inc., to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining, protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Ward Road, National Grid to install one JO pole on Ward Road, beginning at a point approximately two hundred and forty-six feet south of the center line of the intersection of Ward Road and Castle Way, and continuing approximately ten feet in a west direction, in a west direction period. National Grid is petitioning on behalf of the Nahat Pump Station to install a new JO pole, number three dash five, where where it is going to be fed to the new upgrade of the existing secondary underground service, parentheses, actually being fed from pole number four, close parentheses. Hearing notice was published with due notice in a local newspaper, the Daily Item, and posted on, on the town website, thehat.org. End of motion.
Thank you, Josh. Do I have a second on that, Gene?
Second.
Motion's named and seconded. Uh, uh, before I go to read Josh or Gene, uh, this is a public hearing, so I will ask if there's anybody in the public that is, wants to speak in favor of this or against this?
Hello?
Dan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, do you identify yourself and your address?
Sure, I will. Let me turn this up a little bit. George Maholman, sixty-four, Leonard Road, Nahat. I just had a, hi, I just had a question. Um, is there any way you could do this underground? So you wouldn't be susceptible to all the heavy winds and so on and so forth that we get down there?
So there is an under, there is an underground service uh, on this side of the street. It's hard to explain without, you know, looking at a map, but um, this is a this, this pole is going to connect to an underground service.
Okay.
Yeah, so Josh, aware I understand that this pole is at the dead end of, um, Ward Road down by the, uh, Roland Pump Station. There's a transformer there that you may be aware of. So really, the pole will be up there, and it will be uh, a short distance from there, I think it says two hundred something feet, um, to the, um, to the pump station itself.
Raphael, are you here from National Grid?
Yes, yes, sir. I, I was having some trouble to get in. I was, but yeah, I'm from National Grid. Thank you very much for asking.
Go ahead, Raphael.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear so well. In this case, it is really simple. We're gonna be installing a new pole outside of the fence, but actually it's a property that, it looks like a street, like a, a sidewalk, but, but it is actually a property from, from the city, from the town. So the contractor, they want to build a new, and it's the best option, because to reuse the existing conduit is not gonna be a good idea, because it's not gonna be enough. And the size of the cable that they are thinking to use is bigger than, than the one that is already installed. So we're, we're gonna install a new pole, a little bit outside. I, this, the last week, I just, um, stake the pole. So we are waiting on this, and after that, the, the, the job can be scheduled. So it's gonna be a forty, forty-five feet pole in class three.
And then it's underground from that pole to the building?
Yes, it's gonna be a side phone. It's gonna be two conduits, two four-inch conduit. PVC conduit, yeah.
So, um, is the, um, is the, uh, this is to you, Raphael, I guess. Um, is, is the, is the power supply all the way down that road to that pole? That's all above ground? And then from that pole, it goes below ground?
Yes, all, 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 uh, the power is, goes overhead. There, there are, there are overhead lines going to that pole, and from that pole, that dead end, go up to a side phone and gonna, uh, and go to the building. Actually, the, the building is fed in the same way. We are only, in this case, like moving the pole, like approximately like fifteen feet where it's actually. So, and the, and the actual pole is a risk, because it has no, it, it, it has no anchor and guide. So contractors told me that when it's, actually, it's like a really flo- a flooding storm, a big flooding storm. And also because of the winds, they told me that the, the pole and the transformers moves really really, in a, in a risky way.
Yeah, so is, is there, will we wind up with the same total number of poles, and we're just moving the pole?
Well, eh, we will say, we, we can, we can say that we, we can, we only like moving the pole. But I didn't propose the removal of the pole, because in that pole, they have also tele, telecommunications systems. So in that case, we are not allowed to touch them. So if the, in the future, eh, if you want to be removed, so that will be with, with the telecom company. But we are only installing a pole between the, that, that last pole and, and the previous pole, in that case.
Okay, so it's the addition of one pole, uh, but the new pole will not have any of the telecommu- telecommunications, uh, instruments on it, right? Yeah.
No, they can move it. And we also normally, we do, in this case, we are doing a, a, a joint own petition in this case, because obviously, most of the of our poles are joint own poles. So if, in some point, if they decide that they can use the same way, or they want to change, we can remove that other pole, because there's not gonna be any, any equipment on that pole from National Grid. We're gonna remove the lines from the new pole to the last pole.
So we can request, we can request it, Josh. After the new pole is installed, we can request that the telecom companies move their lines over to the new pole, and then once the old pole is empty.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so, um, all right, that makes sense. Um, I believe the, uh, Josh, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, that this is fed from poles on Castle Way, correct?
Yes.
Um, not on Ward Road, so it comes in from Castle Way, I believe, to that pole.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, alright. Well, I think it's important, um, that currently we coordinate, um, with the other utilities to get their lines. Off the old pole and onto the new pole. Cause we don't wanna start, you know, one of the things that drives me a little crazy in this town is. Um, you know, two poles attached together, um. Because National Grid is waiting for the other utilities to get their equipment off it and, um, et cetera, so. Um, a better, uh, effort to create, um, to coordinate those, those activities would be appreciated.
Yes, sir. If you want, I can share with you my, my contact information and you can contact me whatever, whenever you want. And I, I'm not like used to, to, eh, to deal with them. But if you ask me, I would be happy to do it and, and, and already know how, how would be the process. It not depends on us. But I think that we can put some pressure in, and I can ask. Who's the person in charge in, or, or who's the person of the generated side of, of the telecom company?
Yeah, yeah, I usually, I usually deal with our. Government liaison for you guys and she helps us with that. Typically, it's a double pole issue.
Yeah, in this case, but yeah. In this case, it wouldn't be a, 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 it wouldn't be a, a double pole.
Right, I know.
It's okay, it's not gonna be close. Because if it would be close, actually I wouldn't ask for a petition. Because it would be lower than five feet. Because it's higher than that. But I, I know what it means and believe me. In other cities, they always like you. Everybody hates that. Yeah, no, nobody wants. To double poles seeing everywhere, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any further questions on, on this? Um, it's from the public, um. Uh, any further questions from the public? Okay, hearing done, uh, Josh and Gene?
I guess I just wanted to make sure that the. Um. The hearing Zoom number and the. Board of Selectmen Zoom number are the same, right, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Are folks having trouble? Are you here?
Oh, no, I just, uh, I just noticed they're posted a separate meeting, so, um.
Oh, yeah, the same Zoom, same.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I just, you know, to make sure anybody that wanted to log in was able to, yeah.
We have to post separately because we have to post, this hearing has to be posted seven days in advance. You know, where the. Selectment meeting is only forty-eight hours, so we post twice.
Yeah, okay, just checking. That's all I had. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing hearing done, all in favor?
Gene Canty, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye.
Mark, color a nine. Why move the closed public hearing?
I move that the board of selectmen close the public hearing with National Grid.
Second.
Motion is denied and seconded, further discussion? Seeing a hearing none, all in favor?
Gene Canty, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye.
Mark color a nine. That brings us to new, uh, business. We have a vote on some event requests for the Vietnam, um. Veteran's Day, um.
Thanks, Raphael. You're all set.
Thank you so much. Eh. I don't know if I, if I can rule my, my contact information here, or would you like, maybe I can share with you?
I'll connect with you. I'll, I'll find.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. God bless you. Bye.
Okay, if we have a couple motions on some event, event request, one for the, uh, Vietnam. Uh, War Veterans Day and the other for youth soccer, so the motion?
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the event request for the following. The, the National Vietnam War Veterans Day event on Fri- Friday. March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, starting at eleven AM at the Richard Davis Memorial Park. And Nahat Youth Soccer on Saturdays from April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four to June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. From eight thirty AM to ten AM. That's last road park.
Seconded.
Motion is denied and seconded, discussion on the motion?
One for me.
Okay, seeing hearing done, all in favor?
Gene Canty, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye.
Mark color a nine. Uh, we have a vote to approve, uh. The police union contract. I know Tony, this is something that you and the speaking unit have been working on for a long time, so. I'll entertain the motion to, um, to approve this contract.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the contract between the town of Nahat and then Nahat Police Union. M C O P Local One Ninety-four. From July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Seconded.
Motion is denied and seconded, discussion, uh, Tony?
Thank you. I wanna, I wanna thank, um, the, I wanna thank Allison Nieto, our finance director and town accountant for. Uh, being part of this process with me and town council. And I also wanna thank the police union, uh, and their, uh, representatives. Uh, Officer Leary Monaco and Sergeant Costatin for their, um, participation in the negotiation. I think we're both, both parties are very happy to be, uh, done with the negotiation process and happy with the final product. Um, it represents a two, two and a half, two and a half percent, uh, increase. But we also, uh. Stepped up some of our, um. Rates and of salary stipends, incentives and detail rates, uh, to be more competitive. With our surrounding communities, um, while also staying within the town's financial ability, uh, to do so. But the other, you know, the constant theme in all of our meetings. Uh, from the union and. Felt across the table from our perspective too, was putting together a contract that was going to. Incentivize officers to work in the heart and to incentivize them to stay in the heart, retain those employees and give them. The ability to grow, uh, here in our department. Uh, so those are elements that we, that are featured in the, in the agreement that I think benefits. You know, um, the type of community policing that, that we, um. Appreciate here in the heart. So, um, I just wanna thank them. For, uh, you know, grinding out the process with us. Obviously, we're, uh. About ha- a little bit over halfway into the current fiscal year, the first fiscal year of the agreement, so. Uh, with your approval. There, we will, uh, be doing some retro pay calculations back to July first. Um, uh, and, you know, get their new rates, uh, going, uh, for the next payroll cycle. Uh, so.
Uh, thank you, Tony, and I, I, I also wanna thank, uh, you, the chief. Working on behalf of the town and the police union and, um, working together and. And, and getting this done. I, I'm assuming that the terms and condition of this, this contract. From a financial point of view at least, are all accommodated in the, um, um, the selectmen's budget for twenty-twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, um, so that's great, um, we don't need to revisit this again until our twenty-twenty-six, so that's a. It's certainly a load off everybody's shoulders, um. Uh, again, I wanna, um, I wanna. We emphasize that you said, Tony, and. And thank the police union and thank, uh, you and the chief for, um, getting this done. And also Allison, because I know. Uh, firsthand how difficult it can be to, um, uh, cause once you change one number in a salary. It affects all the other conditions in the contract. Um, it becomes very difficult and I'm sure Allison was up, uh, uh, many nights trying to, um. Trying to get all the numbers correct. And so, so thank you. Gene, uh, uh, Josh, any comment?
Josh?
Um, no, just, um, you know, echoing what, um, you and Tony just said, you know, it's, um. Glad we're able to, um. Compensate our officers fairly and, um, still maintain, um. You know, uh, within our town budget, so, well done.
And I'll, I'll follow up with that, there's, uh. As saying ditto to all of that, but I did find this, as I was reading through it. Um. We refer in three different sections as an officer. A member and an employee. As a description of the individuals. Does that impact the contract at all?
I'd have to look at specifically what you, what you're looking at, but it. Both, you know, this MOA has been. Has gone through probably five review cycles. Uh, of our labor council and five on their side as well, so I'm sure it's covered.
It's just the way it went. It went officer, 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 and then it shifted to member and then it finished up with employee. So it just seems.
Yeah, it might just be, the, the MOA points to changes in particular sections. That's what you're looking at, so that section, whole contract might just use different terminology.
That's all I had.
Okay, thanks.
Again, well, well, well deserved contract.
Uh, just, just one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I just want, you know, again, reiterate that. You know, our support, uh, for our police department, um, and, you know, that they. Policing has changed a lot and the, and the, the, the police reform that passed a few years ago. Um, and, you know, updated policies and training requirements and. Um, you know, now with, now our, all of our officers have, uh, body cameras on them as well and. There's a lot of changes that have come in the last couple of years and, um, and our officers have, uh, taken that. In stride and done a phenomenal job adjusting to those things. So I just, you know, one la- I just wanted to commend them on that too.
Good, good point, Tony. Um, likewise. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing hearing done, all in favor?
Gene Canty, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye.
Mark color a nine. Okay, our next, um, subject is to open, um, the annual town meeting warrant.
We can actually, we can actually skip this one because we have no changes. For the current warrant, but we do have the next one. We're gonna do the omnibus budget changes.
Okay, so I have a motion, um. To approve the, uh, board of selectmen ominous budget motion.
I move the board of selectmen vote to approve the omnibus budget as presented and send it to the advisory and finance committee for their review.
And I'll second it.
Motion is denied and seconded, Tony?
Uh, so the changes in the, the, the two small changes that we made were, uh, ref- related to. Our health insurance budget. We were made aware of a couple of changes, uh, so another expected retirement. Uh, and another change of, um. Health insurance class coming up in the next fiscal year for another, uh, employee at the school. Uh, so we had to make some, we had to make some changes in this budget, uh, for what we need to fund in case. Um. That employee retires and a new employee is hired and, you know, is, uh, takes advantage of a family rate. Insurance plan, we have to, we have to prepare for that and fund for that. Obviously, it's, it's too soon to know, so we have to cover ourselves in case that is a, um. An expense that's needed in the future fiscal year. That's one.
You, do you happen to have a, a spreadsheet or something that you could share on the screen showing these changes or?
Um.
I'm putting you on the spot here, but, um.
Yeah, just talk amongst yourselves for a moment.
About those Red Sox.
Yikes.
How about that soccer game?
I actually watched that. I haven't watched the game in a long time. I picked the wrong one to watch.
Which one are you talking about? The sixty-point spread?
No, uh. They, they have twenty-two point lead going in the fourth quarter.
How does that happen? You, you, you beat one team by sixty points one night and a good team. Steve Curry. And, and then you wind up dropping a, 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 a game you shouldn't have lost.
Yeah. Crazy. That's all small talk I have.
That's it, I got it, I got it. Alright, can you see this spreadsheet?
Yeah.
So health insurance, as I've mentioned, so we have one, um, eh, one, uh, employee who is going to be. Uh. Jumping on to the health insurance, uh, for a single person plan. And then we're planning for a potential retirement and that being. Uh, replaced with someone on a family. Insurance plan. So just those small two changes. Uh, equates to forty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Now, it's possible that we won't need to spend all of that depending on. Uh, you know, the replacement should, should, um, the other position retire and be replaced with someone. That doesn't need health insurance or only needs a single plan. Um, it would be cheaper. And the other, the other small change here is on the Memorial Day Committee. Uh, we had. We had the wrong number in here. This, uh, the, the Memorial Day Committee was supposed to be. Ten thousand, original budget in your originally approved amount was, um. Was, uh, I'm sorry, I just misspoke, uh, eight thousand and now this new one will be nine thousand. So it's, it's a thousand dollars more in this budget.
Cause of, cause of the sound system, uh. Used at the wharf primarily?
Uh, both the sound system at the wharf and at the cemetery. Uh. And it was just an oversight that we hadn't included that additional cost. In the original budget that you, that you had, uh, approved on February twenty-first.
Alright.
That's it.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing hearing done, uh, have, have, uh, a vote to approve?
Gene Canty, aye.
Um, let's see, Josh Andrew, aye.
Uh, my color a nine. Alright, thanks, Tony. Um, Coast Guard Housing update?
Okay, so. We, uh, met on Monday in executive session, uh, to talk about. Uh, the valuation of property, uh, specifically Coast Guard housing property. Uh, our, our appraiser, uh, went, uh, has completed. His appraisals of. A property on Castle Road, one property on Gardner Road and one property on Gard- uh, Goddard Drive. Uh, and so that meeting was really to talk about the methodology that he used. Um, and to discuss, you know, the valuation. That he came up with. Uh, we're not sharing. The. Information or the background to that at this point because we are gonna be going through a real estate. Proposal, uh, RFP process. And. We wanna make sure, we, we don't wanna expose that information, uh, to somehow. Interfere with the, uh, procurement process related to. Related to that. Uh, we also. Hold on, just pulling up some more info here. We talked a little bit about that, uh, that real estate marketing. Uh, proposal, RFP as well, uh, with our counsel from KP Law. Uh, and we've reviewed. We received the draft of the procurement documents, uh, we discussed some of the elements in there and some of the changes that we wanna make to that. Um. Again. I don't wanna get too far. Into the details on that because it is a public process and so the RF, the details of that. Uh, will be released when the RFP goes public. Uh, but essentially the idea is that we'll be re- requesting. Marketing proposals from real estate firms, uh, to join the town of Nahat in the, uh. Sale process of the Coast Guard housing properties. Um. Once we have a real estate. Firm, uh. Hired and going to, you know, selected to participate in this process, we're gonna talk with them about. The process by which we're going. We're gonna talk with them about the process by which we're going to put up the properties for sale. And start working on developing that RFP, uh which. We've talked about a few times the previous Board of Selectmen meetings. Uh, how that's gonna work or how we think it's gonna work. Again, a lot of those details will be worked out. Once we have a real estate uh company on board. Um. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you want me to, I don't know if you guys want me to get into more details about how those. Two different procurement processes are gonna, are gonna work. But I'm happy to do that.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, one question that's often asked is, is there any? And I should have asked this Monday, is there any timetable for all this?
Well, we've always, we've, we've been, we've, we've said that our timetable has been that we wanna hit the spring market. Um. So there is, there is a process that we have to go through uh related to the first. Uh, RFP. Which will take, you know, probably three weeks. And then, once we have a real estate broker on board, we'll start working on developing. You know, the procurement for the uh, for the sale of the property. That will have a required by law, a required notice timeframe. Uh, so, you know, we've, we've been hoping our target has been uh April, May. I think we're still, I think we could still accomplish that.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I'm gonna take a shot at um recapping Tony's uh summary, so. Um, we met with the, we, we felt it was important to have an independent real estate appraisal of the properties. Uh, we, we hired um this firm versus Fidelity, I guess it was. Um, and met with their representative Monday, he gave us his assessment of um. The value of those lots, I think it was pretty consistent with what we. Um, sort of had in mind, uh. The request proposal goes out to multiple real estate companies uh soon. Uh, and we are, there is, there'll be a number of criteria. Uh, that the real estate companies must meet, um but. Uh, on which they will be judged and the number one is uh commission. That will be the most important criteria because that is what. Um, affects the cost to the town and thus the taxpayers, so um. That will be our, the top highest weighted criteria, um is, you know, making sure we. Um, maximize the benefit to the taxpayers. Um, and then we'll select that uh real estate agent, the winning bid. Based on that criteria and a few others and um then begin the process of um. With that real estate company of selling the properties. And there are certain um requirements imposed, um as Tony alluded to. Uh, with disposal of um. Uh, not disposal, but you know, chapter thirty. Requirements that we have to meet posting of the sale and that kind of thing um involved as well, so. Um, that's my. My stab at recapping what you said, Tony, in case I, uh, because I need gaps in your summary.
That's a great video.
Good job, Josh.
Well done, Josh.
Uh, okay, uh, any further discussion on this? Oh, there's not a motion, actually, it's just an update, um, excuse me. Uh, okay, Tony, it looks like we're on, on schedule, um. Really aggressive, but um I think, I, I think it's, I, it's all possible. And I do think that this spring is gonna be a pretty hot um housing market and I look forward to um. Seeing what our brokerage will appear.
Yeah, one, one more question um before we leave the topic. Um, could, because I did have to leave the meeting a few minutes early on Monday, um, do we have? When, when do we think we'll get that RFP out to the real estate companies? Do we have a date, approximate date?
We don't have a date yet, uh, we have some homework to do with, or our attorneys have some homework to do based on our discussion that night. Or that day, I mean, um, so I'll. I owe uh a follow-up to Sharon to find out, you know. What her estimated timeframe is to get that back to us, but. Uh, it wasn't a lot of homework, so hopefully, um.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can turn that around pretty quickly.
Tony, do we wanna do uh an update on the uh the three holdouts?
Dan, that's, that's Dan's uh category.
It is, it is, we have a, we had a trial in Alessi already, late January, for the post-trial hearing. On March twenty-first and Mark um Colton will be there to testify, Tony will be there to testify. And some folks from Hall Management Company will be there to testify. Our trial for Carmody, uh, we agreed to move that to April third. I know there was some fear that it might be moved to somewhere in the summer, but it, that did not come to fruition, so we have an April third tight trial date. And the only reason why we agreed to move that was to try to resolve the issues pursuant to an agreement with Ms. Carmody, so. Uh, we're still going through that and we have that on for the executive session. Uh, we just today got a trial date for Green and Avery on Castle Road, uh and that is for April twenty-fourth. And um, that's where we are in terms of uh trial dates.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, could you just um. Um, remind us what the outcome of the Alessi trial was?
The Alessi trial was very, very good for us, um, the jury, and this is public information, so I'm not speaking out of turn. Uh, the jury found that she was not disabled. Uh, she found, the jury found that the original request for accommodation she made in her answer was not reasonable. Uh, and the jury found the town should retain, which should gain possession of the property. Um, in terms of what, what in, what did not go in our favor, and this is because we had facts we inherited from years ago that we had no. Chance of changing, uh, the jury found that there was a habitability claim issue because her furnace had failed for a few days. And she had some issues with her stove a few years ago, um, and also there were some issues regarding utility, so those did not go into town's favor, but at the end of the day. It was a victory for the town, um, but we're not done yet, like I mentioned earlier, with the post-trial hearing on March twenty-first. And the purpose of that hearing is to determine whether the town is subject to chapter ninety-three A. Which is, was referred to colloquially as the Consumer Protection Statute. Uh, we'll be arguing that we have sovereign immunity, it doesn't apply to us, and a few other arguments. But uh, that's what's gonna happen on the twenty-first before the Carmody and Green Avery trial.
Good, thank you, Dan. All right, any further questions on the Coast Guard Housing?
No.
Okay, great. Uh, Josh, any update on deserving each point?
Um, no, not really, uh, we're, we're just waiting for um. Some decision uh from the, from the judge. And it could take up to a hundred and twenty days from whatever the hearing was in uh February, I guess. No, late January.
Okay, thank you, um, Tom, I'm gonna say it's your point.
Thank you, uh, we held a bid opening, um. Let's see, we held a bid, was it, was it on Thursday last week, I think?
Thursday or Friday, I think.
Thursday or Friday last week, uh, we, it, this is for the Emerald Road Water Main work. Fox Hill Road Water Main work, those two pro- portions of the ju- of this project are funded through MWRA borrowing. Um, and then also we had stormwater work. Uh, for the Lowlands area on Fox Hill Road, Castle Road and Ward Road. Uh, those projects are funded with a local borrowing authority previously approved by town meeting. And our uh total uh bid came in, uh, we Greenwich is our uh winning bidder. It came in under budget. Uh, as far as uh those two different funding sources. Uh, we have, you know, plenty of funding to award uh the Water Main project. As for the Storm Drain Project, we have, uh, it was broken out into two separate uh, a base bid. And a alternate bid, our base bid uh came in at. Three hundred ninety thousand, a hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents, which we have the funding for. The alternate bid came in for a hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, that, that, uh, the two combined are a lo- are a little bit higher than our current budget. Uh, however, as you know, we're going to town meeting for a stormwater borrowing. That is gonna allow for us to continue stormwater uh work townwide. Uh, so should we have approval at town meeting for that funding, we'll be able to award the uh drain alternate bid. Uh, and uh, you know, do further drain work uh in other areas of town that that's necessary. Uh, we're currently uh exploring the, you know, study and engineering phases of projects. Related to storm drain improvements on White Way and Willow Road. Uh, there are other areas in town that need to be looked at like Bass Point and um. On the other side of Willow Road by uh Summer Street and Furbush Road and, and low-lying areas like that. Uh, so, uh, very pleased with the um bids that we received. Uh, very pleased that Greenwich, someone who's very familiar with our system, uh, and has done a lot of work in the heart, is the winning bidder. Uh, and, you know, he's, they are eager to get started, they're already started doing dig safes. And likely gonna be starting to do work uh in the upcoming weeks. So next step is to get notice out, uh, likely gonna host a. Uh, neighborhood meeting for uh the Emerald Road area and for the Lowlands area. Um, Emerald Road has been uh, uh, uh. It's, it's been a struggle down there with all the work that's been going on between National Grid. Our uh sewer line improvements and now water work coming, uh. And I want to, I wanna try and reach out to the neighborhood down there, give them some information about what's next. Um, and remind them, you know, of the uh, the ultimate goal of uh, you know, repairing that street. Uh, from the surface, at the surface level, so uh, that's, that's definitely important that we, that we put that effort in. And then on the Lowlands neighborhood side, we've had a pretty good ongoing um community engagement. Uh, related to all the stormwater projects there, so we'll just be revisiting them, uh, giving them an update as to where we are.
Thank you, Tony, I'm, I'm so glad that we're um, yeah, getting to the point where. We actually getting shovels in the ground here, um, finally, so that's, that's great news and. It's also great news that um the contractors, Greenwich has done, uh, for a couple of reasons, one, they're great contractors, I. We've said, they've been involved with the town on many projects for many, many years. They work well with our Department of Public Works and they know our infrastructure uh pretty well, so. We're lucky to have them on board with us every team. So, I'm glad we get the shovel from the ground soon and um, hopefully, we can get these projects done soon. Josh, uh, Jean, any comments?
No, none here.
Uh, yeah, I would guess, I guess I would just echo your, your comments, Mark, and I mean. For me personally, it's just a huge relief um to be. To uh, to, to see shovels going in the ground in the Lowlands area in particular for these drainage uh improvements and repairs. Um. I know all, all three of us and Tony, it's been the high priority for us for. A while now, it's taken, you know, longer than any of us uh wished, but um, I'm so happy that it's finally. Uh, gonna get started, um, yeah, just really pleased about that and. I, I agree with you about Greenwich and, you know, they're here all the time and uh, so I'm happy that worked out as well, um. Yeah. It's also, um, you know, Tony can uh check that one off on his uh twenty twenty-three goals list.
Yeah, I do, I, I do wanna say, Tony, um, you, you've done a really perfect job on this, on this project. Um, you know, not, not, not just in terms of getting up, you know, coordinating all the engineering and design work done. The bidding and contracting, but also working with the neighborhood, um, and all the uh, in the public. And making sure they're up to speed with what's going on and taking their input into consideration. Um, you know, it's not always, it, it, it's always, it's always a number of things that you need to do to put a project together. Um, it just doesn't happen and uh, it requires a lot of coordination between. Um, design and engineering, construction, and public interest, uh, financial interest. Um, and it, it takes a lot and you've done a great job on it, so thank you.
Hey, if I could just add to it quickly, um, for anybody that's uh concerned. Uh, Greenwich has been a good partner to the town. I don't know an awful lot about engineering or, or the construction. Side of the business, but they're there for the big projects and they're there for the small projects. The thing I notice is when something happens that requires a little bit more than, than town involvement. They're there, they're there that day or the day after, so uh, if you could pass that along.
I have to give you a quick um example of their, their service to the town. And, and by the way, this is a little bit, so I mean, they were, they were, they were, they had to submit a little bit now to qualify for this, but. I remember back in nineteen ninety-six, uh, when the town had, I think, about a hundred and six inches of snow one year. Um, it was a terrible year and we were in the end of March, uh, the middle of March and. In the middle of the snowstorm, plowing and I, I was in one of the trucks and we go by. Um, the Coast Guard station and it was just full of water everywhere. Um, turns out it was a water main break after CPW has been working for probably thirty-six hours straight. Uh, plowing snow and the last thing you need is a major water break in, on the hot road. And no sooner did I look up, but I saw um Greenwich truck coming down across the carway. I asked them how they knew about it, they said, we scanned the radios and they just deployed themselves without even us calling them, so. That's the type of contractor they are, um, they're reliable, they're good, they know our infrastructure and I'm sure they're doing a great job.
Yeah, and in, and in this, in this case, they came in about two hundred thousand dollars under estimated budget, so. It's a great price on top of it all.
I'm sure they're kicking themselves on that. All right, okay, great, thanks, Tony, um. You said it with the administrative report.
That's it.
Okay, citizen form? There's nobody out there, Tony.
Yes. I think Jeff Lewis, Jeff, I'm asking you to unmute if you could just state your name and address and.
Hey, Jeff Lewis, Six Elsworth Road, Nant. Uh, it's a little confusion, if you could clear it up for me, Tony. I understand the, the funding on water projects and I understand it on sewer projects. Uh, but you mentioned two or three stormwater. Um, products, projects, is it the same funding source or is that general revenue?
Same funding source.
So it goes through the water and sewer department?
No, it was a, it was a, um, it was an article authorizing borrowing. For that particular capital project.
So not part of the debt shift then?
No.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
The question, yeah, um, any other questions?
George Mahoven?
George?
Yes, George Mahoven, sixty-four Land Road, Nahat, Mass. Um, just a question on the right away, up at the Little Nahat slash Wilson Road. Where they meet, any, any news and, uh, what are we doing? Um, again, uh, an update, I guess. Um, again, an, an update, I guess.
Thank you, Josh.
No, nothing, nothing new to report on that topic.
Okay, what's the next step in that, Dan? If you, if you, what do we, what do we need to do to keep this uh, ball moving?
Well, we, we, Tony and I talked about this. Um, we're trying to get some creative solutions because we're in a bit of a, a legal jam, to be quite frank. Um, and we thought about bringing the, bringing the town together with the two of butters to talk about an amicable resolution as opposed to hashing this out in court, uh, which is where this might be going because this is different than the other right of ways because of the wording of the deeds that led to the, where we are today. So that's sort of where we are at the moment. Um, to try to, I said, come up with some sort of res- resolution. I, I think the, if we're facing the the right of way, the, the, the neighborhood to the right, I think is pretty amicable. The neighborhood to the left is, is, is less amicable. So uh, that's what we're faced with.
So um, are, are we talking about the entire, it, it, it was originally what, we thought a ten-foot right of way, correct? But
Right.
Is the whole ten-foot subject to this or is it just five?
Well, you know, that's a great question, Mark. Uh, when I was hashing this out with the attorney for the property to the left, the original thought was, okay, well, we certainly have a right, well, we certainly have a claim to the five feet to the right side. But then in talking to this fellow, and he's um, Jimmy Moore is his name over in um, in the Edison Building in Lynn. He, he seems to think that his client has a right to all ten feet. So I don't know where he gets that. I can see his argument for five feet. But for the whole ten feet, um, we, we don't see that happening. Um, and there is an issue regarding um, ownership generally. Uh, because at the, at the end of the day, this is originally part of um, two families that own basically all of Little Nahat. Um, and it's kind of unclear where the deeds have gone since then. So there's a bit of that issue as well. And that's where my predecessor sort of uh, left off in terms of deed uh, and, and um, the title review um, moving forward. So so we're, we're faced with a few challenges here. Um, it's not, it's not as easy as we had hoped, to be honest, but there's a lot of
Is this deed that is in um, the field uh, registered in land court?
Yes, this is in land court, uh, which makes it a bit easier in some instances because everything is recorded and it's more verified because that's what land court does in registered land. It's a bit harder because it, it makes prescribed provisions a bit harder to prove uh, in that case, but we're trying to work our way through it. It's not, it's not an easy process. It's, it's not at all.
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not a, it's not an issue of prescribed easement on the on the abutted side because they can't get a prescribed easement, easement if it's a, a public property, correct?
Well, that's true. Um, but there, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get into the weeds here, it's not clear that it belongs to the town. Um, it, 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 the, the original division of the property back in nineteen nineteen, nineteen eighteen, uh, reserved the rights of those right of ways to that particular owner, which was a trust. I forget the name of the trust at the moment. Um, and in talking to Sheila and talking to Tony and talking to our title researcher, we didn't see anywhere where that original owner transferred the ownership of those rights of ways to the town or in, in some respects, where did the town take that right of way? We didn't see any of that. So um, it might be an issue of unless we can reach some sort of amicable resolution. There might be an issue of a, you know, trying to reach out to these surviving heirs of the trust that originally divided this property. We're there and our companies that do that. We have a case in South Boston. That is all that, that's, that's what we hired them to do. So it might be.
We also have, we also have some evidence of the, you know, the stairway and the right of way from the past. You have some pictures, things like that, but it, the stairways, I don't know how long they were gone for before I got involved in the stuff and that might be an issue.
Let, let me just throw this out, um, Tony and Dan. Um, I think it's important to get this on the front, um, burner. Um, however it turns out, um, probably because I know it's important. Um, that, you know, that one of the issues that we're trying to deal with is our public ways. Um, well, town and I think it's important that we set an example here, uh, of how important these public ways are to the town and that we're not gonna take them lightly. Uh, we're, we're forced them, we're, we tend. Um, so I, I, you know, I, I just don't wanna set a precedent in any way, um, that we're just sort of, and I, I don't think we are, I'm not saying we are, you know, yeah, putting this under the rug, but I think we need to in my opinion, um, be pretty aggressive on this. Um, and uh, because it, it, it could as I said, set a precedent for all the issues uh, in, in years to come. So that's just my, my feeling about it.
I, I agree with you. I, I, and our creative approach isn't um, non-aggressive, you know, are we just, we're trying to see if we can accomplish it without going through the timely process of land court and and, you know, expensive process of going through that. If we can get it done with a, an agreement of some sort amongst, you know, the town and the two butters, uh, that could be much faster process for us.
Understood. Uh, Josh, uh, Gene?
No, nothing on that. I, I mean, as, as you said, Mark, it's been a long drawn-out process, not drawn-out, but a long process. And um, getting it done will certainly work for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, um, we're talking about one right of way in this instance, but uh, you know, it, it encroachment on these right of ways has been going on for years and it slowly erodes um, the public's rights really. Um, and um, so when you take things that don't belong to you or you take over things that don't belong to you, you know, the public suffers and um, yeah, uh, I, I agree. We need to um, you, you know, aggressively enforce these rights of ways in general. Uh, it's not to be mean to private property owners, it's to be um, properly respectful of the public.
Okay, well said, uh, Josh. Uh, any further discussion on this?
Yeah, could, could I say something?
Go ahead, Josh. I mean, Josh.
It's okay. Um, I, I believe, isn't there a um, um, drain pipe right, right where that right of way is that goes down to the ocean? So I mean, doesn't, doesn't that give us claim to that land? And also, I really appreciate what you said, Mark. I'm a hundred percent behind you as far as being aggressive. We've been after, I've been after this right of way for over twenty years now. You remember when you, when you were the town administrator, we talked about this. And so I, I really would really like to see that the town do be more aggressive instead of trying to figure this out and get this done. So I can see it done in my lifetime for Pete's sakes. You know, twenty years is a long time to be fighting around with the right of way that, as far as I'm concerned, is our right of way up there. There were stairs up there, there's a landing up there still for the stairs. They violated the right of way by putting a driveway in there. At first she claims that she owned five feet of the land and I suggested, well, why don't we put in a five-foot right of way then? Now all of a sudden we're being told that we don't own any part of that land? Doesn't make any sense to me. I thought this was all done in, excuse me, twenty years ago when we did do, walked all the right of ways. And then we didn't have to because we hired a lawyer to find out which ones were the right right of ways and legally the right of ways. And we had a map all drawn out and that was one of the legal rights of ways. So I don't understand how this has all changed and why it's taking so long. And I would really appreciate it if you do make it one of the, I wouldn't say top priorities in the heart, but you know, Josh mentioned it's only one right of way, but in Little Nahat, that's the only real viable right of way we have um, over here. You know, we don't have much room as it is over here with houses, on top of houses. We don't get to see the ocean that much. Even driving down the street now, because everybody's putting up bushes and so on and so forth. This one right of way means an awful lot to the people of Little Nahat. So with that, I, again, I just wanna reiterate, I would really appreciate it if we do go a little more um, and a little more forceful, I, I, but, but just be more forceful, I guess is the word. It's not the word I'm looking for, but that, that'll, that'll do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Uh,
I, I just, you know, to that point, we have been, you know, we, we, we've reopened and reclaimed the right of way on Bass Point Road. Um, we're, working with collectively with uh, Joe Moshe as he was rebuilding that property. And that was a much factor. What's that?
It was on Wilson Road and that's, that's why I don't
Did I say Bass, Bass Point Road?
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Wilson Road, I'm sorry, Wilson Road. So you know, that, that, the, the quickness of that process shows, you know, when you work with the property owner, how that can be effective in ways. But we have to, you know, George, it's, I understand the frustration. Uh, you understand, we have to make sure that the town has legal right to traverse on top of that property before we invite uh, residents to do so. So we just, we gotta cross, we just gotta, unfortunately, we just gotta go through the legal back, the legal process, you know, before we um, take the next step.
I understand that, but it just seems like this process is taking an exceptionally long amount of time where it shouldn't be this long amount of time. I really, I just, I, I just find it very difficult to swallow that it's taken over twenty years to find a viable solution to this one with right of way that's, I believe is very important. It's one of the only places you can go fishing off the rock.
George, to put it simply, if it was clearly legally the towns, it wouldn't take twenty years. That's the issue. So we have to make sure we figure that out so we can take the next step.
No, I understand that, but I just hope that you like Mike said, make it a priority.
Okay.
All right, all right. Um,
Thank you.
And, and Josh, thank you for, you know, bringing this up. I know, you know, you, you, you have a lot of things to talk about. I do, but I mean, I, I do appreciate you. And like you said, um, we've been on this, um, um, for over twenty years. I think when we did the right of way study in in Little Nahat with two thousand seven, two thousand eight, I, I don't know what year it was, but um,
Yeah, it's over twenty years, but that, that, you know, just
You've been a strong advocate um, for the town and uh, particularly for your neighborhoods in Little Nahat on these right of ways for all those years that I appreciate it.
Oh, I appreciate your work too and everybody else's work. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, anything else in citizen form? Okay, hearing none. We're going to adjourn to executive session. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, hey, before we, before we do, Tony, I don't know, I don't know if you want to or not, but given that we've got an issue down on Short Beach with the birds, do you wanna speak to that?
Thank you, Gene. I'm sorry, I did wanna speak to that. Um, yeah, so over the last few days, uh, we've been getting reports of deceased birds on Short Beach. Uh, that's really the only place we've seen them. We haven't seen them on Tudor Beach, um, or uh, Doggy Beach. Uh, but it does sound like Long Beach is experiencing it, uh, which is D C R property, Swamp Scott Beaches. And uh, it even seems further than that. Gloucester, uh, you know, towns south of us, towns north of us along the east coast. So we did go through something similar in June of twenty twenty-two. It turned out to be some sort of avian flu. Um, but we don't know if that's, if it's the same thing yet. Uh, so we have, uh, we spoke with or our animal control officer, uh, spoke with mass wildlife, um, spoke with the environmental police. Spoke with the state's uh, the state ornithologist. Um, and they are sending uh, someone from Sea Coast Science Center uh, to swab the deceased birds uh, to, you know, then run a test, try and see if they can find out what's going on. But until we get any more direction, um, we're asking folks, you know, to, please don't, you know, do not touch the birds and especially, you know, if you, well, first of all, on, on Short Beach in Tudor Beach, your dog should be leashed anyways. Uh, but especially given the situation for the well-being of your pets. You wanna keep them on a leash so they don't go uh, sniffing around any dead, dead uh, animals. Um, because it could be harmful. So, uh, you know, we put a public message out on Facebook. We did a code red call and we put some signage out as well at the beaches.
Well, thank you, Tony. Gene, um, thanks for uh, bringing that up. Um, I do see a lot of chatter on um, social media we got, we had today, so. Um, hopefully we can find the answer to what's going on. Great, um, any other uh, comments or questions before we adjourn to it, adjourn to the session?
Let me see here. She usually writes something in the chat. Hold on. Oh, okay. And, oh, and she left the meeting. She had sent, she sent in the chat. Can we have an update on the Flash Road Courts project? She, she's referring to pickleball. Um, at our, during our last Board of Selectment meeting, uh, our D P W superintendent and um, our contractors went to a CONCOM commission meeting about the pickleball lighting project. And I believe we got a favorable vote uh, from the CONCOM. We're just waiting for an order of conditions and then um, you know, once the weather turns, I believe we're gonna start, start the work to installing the lights there.
Good.
Okay, um, so I have a motion to adjourn going to executive session.
I moved it to Board of Selectment vote to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with the town administrator. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Do you so declare, Mr. Chairman?
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. So the discussion, can you hear me now? All in favor?
Gene, can't the eye?
Josh, in for mine?
Thanks, everybody.
Night, folks.
Bye. I think that, I think that motion